We're going to start tonight with a pledge of allegiance and then invocation. So if you will, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Let's call to order the meeting. I'm going to go over the table items for tonight that will not be heard. First one is R 25-02, which was N W A L D LLC. R 25-05. C 25-02. Preliminary plat, so that's a PP 25-01. Large scale, L 25-03. B 25-02. And our final table item tonight will be W 25-05. So we will not be hearing any of those tonight that were in table for further consideration. Can we get a roll call, please?
Brent Couch.
Here.
Chris Hussein. Clement Ogonyemi.
Here.
Del Tyler.
Here.
Howard Austin. Jennifer Keith.
Here.
Mark Cloud.
Here.
Ray Cordial. Teresa Reynolds.
Here.
Thank you for that. Can we get approval of amendments from our last meeting from December 3, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Keith. Can I have a second? Second by Mr. Cordial. You guys need to vote. Ms. Keith? That passes eight to zero. Minutes have been approved. All right, we'll begin tonight with our table items from last meeting. First one up to review is FP 24-15 Hawksville Subdivision presented by David Gilbert.
Good evening. Hawksview subdivision is a nine lot residential subdivision in a P U D in extreme northwestern Springdale. You've seen the final plat. Construction is complete and we submit this for your approval.
Can we have staff comments?
Standard comments only. No comments from engineering.
Any further comments from staff? Do we have any public comment? Commissioners? This will be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments?
Motion by Mr. Couch. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Clement. That passes eight zero.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in our office by tomorrow at noon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item up to discuss is L 24-43 West End Town Homes. This will be for large scale. We'll also be reviewing a variance request for minimum distance between adjoining drives. This has been presented by Engineering Services, Inc.
Thank you, Brandon Rush with ESI. This project was approved once before, a couple of years back, and we're trying to come back through with a new approval for essentially the same project. The variance is kind of making the best out of the awkward situation there with the end of that cul-de-sac. Happy to answer any other questions.
Staff comments?
For the new sidewalk on West End, need some details on how the additional three feet is going to be added to the existing. The three drives are too close together. The minimum separation is 150 feet. Variance has been requested. I have some questions about how the water sewer services were going to be put across Wesley by board or open cut. Need some more information about the existing condition of Wesley Avenue and whether it needs to be repaired to come up to current standards. And same about the Pleasant Street Church parking lot that is used as the fire access. That's all.
For planning besides standard comments, variance B 2503 was submitted for the distance between drives. A screening fence is required in accordance with Chapter 56. Show trees associated with screen. Semi-opaque screening is appropriate for multifamily to commercial. Need to show how this will be accomplished per the ordinance. And also what is being added for the intermittent visual obstruction. Semi-opaque screening calls for vegetation also. Existing fence to the south is on a separate parcel and is in very poor condition. New screening with this project will still be required even with existing screening. And on the plans, it was shown that City of Springdale has asked that they demolish that fence. So with that, City of Springdale is not requiring a fence to be torn down. If a neighbor's fence is on your property, that's a civil matter between you and your neighbor. You may leave the existing fence and place us to new screening fence further inside of the existing, but we are not requiring you to demolish a fence. Lighting plan is required displaying at least one foot candle in all parking and pedestrian areas. Several areas, including the playgrounds, do not have sufficient lighting. Tot lot, we are not able to read the numbers that are on there, so we need something to be resubmitted for that that's legible. Need to show what areas counting towards common open space. On the plan set, the information that you have for common open space is not correct. It was changed in one spot, but not everywhere, so that needs to be corrected. We've had the discussion about the mature trees on the property. Under crime prevention through environmental design. For Section B, you stated all doors that open to the outside are well lit. All units have a back door, but no lighting is shown for the back of the buildings. Wall packs were shown, but I don't see where they have the full cutoff shields. Those will be required. Also, wall packs are not to be used for lighting of parking areas, and it appears that they are. For the elevations, we still need the percentage of each type of material being used for each side of the building. And also, the elevations shown are not the ones that you said y'all were going to submit for the, in the meeting, you said you were going to submit what was consistent with Oriole Town Homes, and that's not what we've got. So we need to know which elevations are correct.
Is that it?
Yes.
Any other comments from staff?
Brandon, you want to react to those comments?
We spoke with the engineering department earlier today, and I think we can address those issues that they brought up. For planning, we're going to have full cutoff wall packs. They're not being used for parking lot illumination. The fence, we can deal with the fence. I understand that.
Do we have the right elevations?
Yes, those are the right elevations.
Okay. Everybody noted in the record, we have the ones that are presented in the packet of the elevations y'all are going to build. Okay.
If I could on that, during the meeting, when they said they were going to submit the same ones as what we're over at Oriole Town Homes, there was some discussion about the foundation landscaping because of the concrete. If these are not those, then we need, we will probably, we'll need to look at foundation landscaping again because they were allowed not to put it on the front because of the concrete that was needed for parking.
So that's what you intend on this one?
We intend to do what was discussed in that meeting on those backsides.
Which means put the concrete in?
Yes.
Which means the foundation landscaping is different?
Our foundation landscaping is relocated elsewhere on the site like we talked about in that meeting.
Okay. So the landscaping plan we have shows that?
Yes.
I will need to revisit that.
Okay, because I didn't think the plan that we had showed the revised landscaping to take that foundation landscaping to another place. Not the one that we had in the packet. Have you submitted one since that last meeting?
Yes, we resubmitted after that meeting.
When? Today?
No.
Okay, good.
December 13th.
Okay, we'll go back and look. It still has to be addressed, and we have to have the right landscaping sheet to know how we're moving forward with that. The number of landscaping that was required for foundation is in some other place.
Right, and like I said, with these, with these buildings, they have them in other places where there is foundation landscaping, but the ones that are similar to the ones at Oriole Town Home, there's not the space for that. So I guess that's my question.
Okay, this is the newer ones on Oriole Street, the ones that we've just worked through for many months to get closed?
Yes.
Okay.
Any public comment? Any questions from commissioners? First thing we need to do is vote on the variance request of the variance for the driveways being too close together. This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
By Ms. Keith. That passes eight to zero. I have a follow-up question, so I just want to make sure I understand, Brandon, what you're saying. So although the landscape plan that we may have in our packet isn't what you've recently submitted, but what you're saying is we'll have the right amount of landscape, just may not be in the exact area that we typically have, it'll be located somewhere on this project.
Yes, it will be located elsewhere on the site.
So this will be a motion subject to staff comments for the large scale.
Motion subject to staff comments?
By Mr. Couch.
Second.
By Ms. Keith. That passes eight zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up to review is L 24-47 Legacy Venture Storage. We have a few variances to take into account as well. This is presented by Expedient Civil Engineering. Or Dave Burrows.
Hi, Dave Burrows, Burrows Architecture. Hi, Dave Burrows, Burrows Architecture, architect of the project. I believe the main variance is there that were cleaned up from the last time. We just tried to clean that language up a bit, speaking directly to the entrances, roof, and landscaping. So we did meet with staff early on in the project. We do have some pretty extreme topography, which is going to explain the entrance there that was discussed on the western facing facade. The landscaping, obviously, this is a mini storage, so the interior is all paved around, but the landscaping plan, we tried to reallocate some of those, the planting there. And on the roof articulations, we went to pretty great lengths to work with the city to make sure that all exterior facing facades had roof projections, had the variations within the depth of the facade per code. Obviously, we're requesting the variance really just on the interior, non-visible facades within the interior of the mini storage. But all exterior, all visible outside faces there do meet the intent of the code.
Staff comments?
Developers required to improve the abutting streets to the City of Springdale standards. So in this case, there are three fronts, so that applies to Thompson, Black Oak, and Dixon. Sidewalks are required along the right-of-way line. Please review the master street plan update and include new street classifications and right-of-way widths on the labels. Submit approved R dot permit before construction. And a waiver has been requested for the sidewalk on Thompson and for any improvements in Dixon, I believe. And we are, we are doing improvements for the very small portion on Black Oak. I had some questions about how the sewer is going to be extended to this project because it does have to come from across the street on the other side of Black Oak and down Dixon Street. So we just, we just need a little bit more information about how deep that trench is going to be because the road is only about 15 feet wide and kind of what that road is going to look like when we're finished. And then the apron on the front should be concrete to the right-of-way and use a commercial drive detail. And I do believe they have complied and they've shown the commercial drive detail, so that is no longer applicable.
For planning besides standard comments, square footage of the buildings as shown on page C 4.0 does not equal the square footage shown when calculating what is shown on the plans. I need that to be corrected. I'm not sure which one's correct. Minimum three feet of clear width excluding vehicle overhang must be provided as an accessible circulation route. Therefore, the sidewalk must either be five feet wide or have wheel blocks. We need a sidewalk on the north side of the building. Since there's a customer entrance, all you have is one that goes to the front door. It should extend the full length of that. Automatic or other irrigation systems shall be required for landscaping areas. Show irrigation system or location of hose bibs. I only found one hose bib, and hose bibs must be within 150 foot of all landscaping. We will need additional hose bibs and where their location is. I did not see what the width of the entry drive is. That will need to be added.
It looks like it's dimensioned right there. I don't know if I can, looks like it's 30 feet.
Okay. I'll, I'll look at that, but the one that I had didn't have that. I think there was one submitted after. Let me see where I'm at here. Need to show size, location of all freestanding signs, show distances from street right-of-way. Lighting plan is required displaying at least one foot candle in all parking and pedestrian areas. We've requested that lighting be added on the backsides of buildings five and six along with the west side of building nine. Then there's no light shown at the entrance on the north side of the building. All sides of principal building that face, directly faces an abutting public right-of-way shall feature at least one customer entrance. Variance B 2494 submitted for no customer entrance on the Thompson side or the west side. Foundation landscaping is required. Variance B 2494 submitted for that. Central features, community spaces, show have direct access to the public sidewalk. B 2494 submitted. Due to the variance, not having access to the public sidewalk. Facades over 100 foot in linear length shall incorporate wall projections and/or recesses per Springdale Commercial Design Standard. Variance B 2494 has been submitted for that. And that's all I've got.
I have one more question. There's no outside storage on this facility. Those buildings that are behind, that back up to Dixon Street, there's a green space behind it, that's not outdoor storage, right?
No, this is a mini storage, both climate control and inside storage, so no outdoor storage.
Okay. That's in the record, no outside storage, okay?
Any public comment? Commissioners?
I do have a question on the lighting. I noticed that they commented about the lighting photometric plan. I did not see any information on the fixtures that are going to be used in the, in what was in our packet. So I just want to confirm they are all cutoff fixtures?
They are full cutoff. I believe we did provide a cut sheet, but it's a full cutoff, dark sky compliant, and the comment about adding the lights, when we looked at this, we're well beyond the one foot candle it looked like on average as well as the low spots, so. But, but the photometric plan was provided and it looked like it was adequate lighting. And we could add some additional, I think what they tried to do is just show that it was all on the paved area, but we do have additional wall pack lights that are lighting up the rest of the perimeter.
Any other questions, Commissioner? All right, we need to handle the variances first. I guess we'll do the variance. Do y'all want to take these as one, or you want to separate them out? Thoughts?
Do the street improvements have to be separate, don't they? Since that, yeah.
On the landscaping, do you have all the landscaping we asked for, just not necessarily along the building?
As I understood, the landscaping that was required around the perimeter, which obviously we have pavement up against the buildings on the interior there, was reallocated elsewhere on site.
Thank you for that.
You're saying the foundation landscaping, not perimeter landscaping?
Correct, the foundation.
Because you got the perimeter landscaping separate, and you have to make up for the foundation landscaping.
That is what I understand.
Okay.
So this will be a call for the vote on all variances, entrances, roofs, and landscaping.
Call for the vote?
By Mr. Couch. That passes eight zero.
Thank you.
We have a couple more things. Now we have to handle the waiver of street improvements. This will be a motion to forward to City Council, a recommendation for approval or denial. I need a motion and a second. Or comments?
Motion to forward, to deny.
So we have a, have a motion to deny the street improvements? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Reynolds. So the commission votes unanimously to recommend the City Council for denial of the street improvement waiver. Last is, will motions subject to staff comments on a large scale?
Motion subject to staff comments?
By Ms. Keith?
Second.
Second by Mr. Couch. That passes eight zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff will prepare the resolution recommending the denial of the waiver of street improvements to the council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is L 24-50 Fortieth Street Town Homes presented by ESI.
Thank you, Brandon Rush with ESI. This is a proposal for a 12-town home unit multifamily project. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Staff comments?
My only comments regard the stormwater permeable pavers under the parking lot. We just need construction details before you guys get a grading permit. Specifications for aggregate vehicle loading calculations since this is used as fire turnaround. Maintenance plan for that paver system, details for H D P E trenching, backfill, construction kind of details like that. And then I do think this would be a really great opportunity. There's a bus stop right there out front. I recommend putting a bench or something that would.
In addition to planning standard, planning comments that are standard, pin all corners and submit the recorded plat for LS 2345. Please identify the distance between the driveways on the adjoining properties. It was called out a couple of times in the plans, but there's nothing there. I can't find that dimension. To improve the safety in the play areas for the multifamily development, it's suggested to go ahead and use berms, plants, fences, something to keep the play area separate from the driveways and parking areas. The play areas must include at least three features from the multifamily design standards. I was only able to find two. For the landscaping and screening, it was stated in the comments that all mechanical equipment will be screened per code, but it wasn't identified how. The maximum length for a continuous and uninterrupted fence is 50 feet. Brakes in the fence can include a variety of different options for you all. The detail for the screening fence on sheet eight includes an illustration of a gate. Just make sure to include the location in the plans. The lighting plan is insufficient for the southwest open area, the northern central open multifamily play area, and both western and eastern sections of the eastern open area slash the multifamily play area. So if we could just go ahead and update it just a little bit. Cut-off shields or cutoff light fixtures are needed to minimize the glare and light spill onto the nearby properties and roadways, and we're needing some pedestrian lighting as well. There is a maximum height that needs to be considered when proposing these here. An additional option is something on the buildings, maybe some wall packs, but there's also a maximum height there as well.
Any further staff comments? Any public comment? Any comments from commissioners?
Brandon, you want to react to the comments? Can y'all address all those?
Yes, we can work with staff to address all those. Lighting will be full cutoff fixtures, things like that. I mean, I don't, I don't think there's anything in that comment list we can't handle.
Okay.
Can you explain to me the grading on the north side of the property? Because the way I read it, it looks like it's elevated to go down as it goes north, but you have a lot of your stormwater, I'm guessing underneath that permeable parking? So you just, can you just talk quickly and talk to me like a fifth grader, explain a little bit of the water treatment you're doing there?
It should all be graded to drain to the parking, the permeable paver system.
Maybe the, what was in our packet was just wrong because it shows higher elevation closer to the parking than it does further away from it. I don't know, maybe that's a backside of it, I'm not sure. Maybe I just have a bad drawing.
There are a few retaining walls, short walls in that area as well.
Can we see what you're looking at? Maybe we can help you.
Mark, are you asking whether drainage is going to run off on the neighboring properties?
Yes.
Okay. I do believe there is an inlet in that backyard because there.
Yeah, that was my question. I mean, I'm assuming.
Traditionally, water ran that way.
Right.
So there is drainage.
Already existed.
Through that subdivision, there's a ditch between the two larger tracks, so two off of Fortieth. There, there is a drainage system that runs through there, so there is some water that does flow that direction, which has been there in the current day. But we're trying to, you know.
Bring it the other way.
Collect it all to the parking lot with the drainage system, and then it will still flow into that network.
Sure. Thank you for that.
You do show an existing storm line to be removed on the plan.
There's some interesting storm drainage over there that they're going to get cleaned up.
I just, I mean, I'm, I like the.
There's some storm drain there that does run north.
Right.
And so it, you know, it appears, and there's also another, it's a weird system.
Sure.
So right, right by the church parking lot, there, there's like a high spot or something in the, in the storm drain system. One of them may be plugged, maybe, it's, it's an awkward system. So it looks like we're, we're taking the piece out to the north, and we're going to put everything back to West End, so everything's going to drain back. But that green space north of the parking area, yes, will still drain to the north.
The way it's been draining?
Yes.
Basically what you said. Thank you for that. This will be a motion subject to staff comments. Mr. Cordial?
Second.
Second by Ms. Keith. That passes eight to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next session is rezoning. Next item up to review is R 24-56 presented by Jacob Marks.
Good evening.
Let us know what you're asking for here, please. Thanks.
We're trying to rezone from agricultural to single family. It's in a pasture. The son is, has split off the two acre minimum per septic to build his parents' house. And we didn't have the, the road frontage. I think we needed 200 feet per parcel for the zoning, so we were attempting to rezone to, to achieve the 70 feet that we had.
Any comments?
You want staff comments?
Sure.
The rezoning request.
The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan's recommended for approval, protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city, and ensure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size.
Any public comment? Commissioners? This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
Mr. Couch? That passes eight zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-eighth.
Next up is R twenty-five dash zero-one, Eric and Cherry Barker, presented by Eric and, I'm going to butcher that name. You can tell me what your name is when we get to the podium. Thank you.
It's a Charis.
Nice.
Like Paris, but with a C H for fun.
That is an S. This is older eyes. I can't see your letters all the time.
Okay. Yeah, we are proposing to rezone a partition off the southernmost portion of our one point seven nine acre parcel. It had original, it had previous, the previous owner had a business there and it had been grandfathered in. When we bought it, of course, it was residential. There's already a commercial cut. There's already a signage base there. With the rezoning of the parcel across the road to house Central State Steel Manufacturing and then all the Frida Lake and all that stuff, and they've widened Kendrick Avenue. There should be no additional road burden or traffic burden there. There's plenty of room. There's already adequate parking.
Staff comments?
The rezoning request is not in keeping with the land use plan, but is recommended for approval as it brings the site into conformity and supports the following goal. Encourage development of small-scale neighborhood retail and service. Use is at intersections of collector and arterial streets and at the edge of logical neighborhood areas or within neighborhoods where suitable sites exist and conditions are appropriate to balance compatibility with convenience.
Is that your residence that's adjacent to this property? That's where you live now? Any other staff comments?
A little over three years.
Yeah. Yeah, a little over three years.
The business was opened there several many years ago. Actually, before it was annexed into the city. And then it became a non-conforming use and it's changed hands a couple of times. And it's been a commercial use for a long time.
I mean, there's really nothing we have to do to, besides just move in.
Sure.
But it would just make it, it would make us able to provide jobs for more people in Springdale at lower cost.
Yep. Thank you.
It'll have to meet commercial standards, right, with the existing, okay. Is there any, is there any buffer between the two? Is there a fence or any type of?
Just a retaining wall on most of the south side, but no fence, no trees.
Well, and you have the house to the north.
Right.
So you're going to walk
Yeah.
Currently.
We have like a, there's a stone path between the shop and the house. If we cut our grass, you can see it.
You really didn't have to admit that, you know? You really didn't.
Any public comment? This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
By Mr. Clement? That passes eight zero. Thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
And I apologize for butchering your name. Next up is R twenty-five dash zero-three, presented by Otto Baro, Pacheco and James Camacho.
My name is Alberto. So we're trying to rezone for commercial on our lot.
Staff comments?
The rezoning request is not in keeping with the comprehensive land use plan. It's not recommended for approval.
Any other staff comments or commissioner questions or comments? Is it currently being used as a parking lot?
Well, uh, we're, we just recently bought this lot. I mean, we were told it was already commercial. And our plan for this is just, just for like our employees to park their vehicles and maybe in the future build a shop for tools.
With the current zoning, you're not authorized to park anything there because it is an A1 zone. You can't park vehicles there for people who are working for you. You can't park equipment there. And if it is rezoned, there would have to be a large-scale development plan and that area would have to be paid for a parking lot. Are you parking on the grass now or is it?
We were, but we just moved everything out of there.
Okay, so there's nothing on the lot right now?
Not right now.
Okay.
So did you say you bought, when did you buy this property?
Probably close to a year now.
And you were told at the time it was C two when you bought it? Is that what it was?
Yeah, we were told it was already, uh, at first it told we were starting the process to be into a commercial. And then when we got the loan, it was like, well, in order to get to approval, this has to be commercial lot. So, I mean, it was our file, we didn't check and everything. So once we bought it, we started parking our trucks and, I mean, that's, that's what we've been using it for. There's no house, there's nothing in there, just an empty lot. And just recently somebody complained about it.
Do you, are you, do you own land to the south of it? Or is this the only property you have?
No, that's the only property here.
There has never been an application to rezone this.
Yeah.
To commercial, correct?
Yeah.
Previously, there wasn't one.
Any public comment? Any commissioners? Any thoughts?
My only concern, I guess, is as it continues to go down where it's just more residential down in that development in that area, but that's just my thoughts.
Yeah, this has been a tricky area for us because there's obviously some commercial. At the same time, we're trying to identify what makes sense to end the commercial development. And so that's, that's the part.
The lot, the lot just, just beside us, it's a commercial now. It's a plumber and he has a shop and everything there. I know he still has to meet all the requirements from the city. But he recently just changed it to commercial.
And that was changed at commercial of the City Council overturning the planning commission's denial of the rezoning.
Yeah, we've been primarily wanting this to stay residential because of the current, I mean, there could be at some point somebody buy all this land and make it all commercial, but I think piecemeal it together, we can lean in.
Because we're, we're on the side of the highway, not on the opposite side.
I understand, yeah. This is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
By Mr. Couch? Ms. Keith? Ten-four. That fell seven to one.
You have the right to appeal the planning commission's decision to the City Council. You have to file your appeal in the City Clerk's office within fifteen days. And you have to identify what you think the error of the planning commission made. And you have to notify the adjacent property owners by certified mail again.
Thank you, sir.
So when you file your appeal with the City Clerk, she'll tell you what City Council meeting you'll be eligible to go to.
Thank you.
Okay?
Next item up is R twenty-five dash zero-four, MK Properties of N W A LLC. Request to rezone from A1 to C5, presented by Phil Swope of Swope Consulting. Or someone else?
Paul Sims with Swope Consulting. We're requesting a rezone from A1 to C2. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
C2, the agenda says C5, right? But it is C2? Okay.
Staff comments?
The rezoning request is not in keeping with the comprehensive land use plan. However, it is recommended for approval as a proposed R doc improvements will improve, will support a commercial concentration at this intersection.
Any public comment? Commissioners? Uh, this is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
By Ms. Keith? That passes eight zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-eighth.
Thank you. Next agenda item is R twenty-five dash zero-six, Derek Calhoun, DBA Calhoun Farms. Uh, request to rezone from A1 to SF3, presented by Mark Marcus.
Good evening, I'm not Mark Marquest, but I'm Justin Jorgensen representing him. I'm a Jorgensen Associate Civil Engineering Company.
Just a minute.
Have authorization to represent him in writing?
Yes, ma'am. And I do have Taylor Marquest here, his son, that is also with Riverwood Homes. If there's any issues, he's, he can speak to this.
Is he a part owner or?
I'm not exactly sure what the ownership is, between family. Haven't asked yet.
We currently only have Mark qualified to speak at this moment. You can approach.
I'm Taylor Marquest, Mark's son, president of Riverwood Homes. I, I can, he, he's out of town for some medical things, so anything I can help with.
David, are we good?
What type of company do you own?
Yeah, Riverwood Homes, a residential construction company. And so I'm, I'm
Is it incorporated? You're one of the corporate investors?
I, yeah, I'm a percent owner of Riverwood Homes. Yep.
I think so.
The property is listed as Derek Calhoun, Doing Businesses Calhoun Farms. They are the current owner of the property.
They, they are, yes.
Riverside, Riverwood Homes does not own the property yet.
No, no, we have not closed yet.
Okay, so we have to have someone who can represent Derek Calhoun, not Riverwood Homes, because you're not the owner. And we don't have written as authorization that you are authorized to represent them. That's the problem we have.
That authorization was submitted.
Yeah.
It was submitted and I emailed after he signed it not too long ago.
Okay, let's type of this one, then we'll come back to it.
Yeah, we'll come back around to this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. While we do that, we'll move to R twenty-five dash zero-seven, Daniel and Heather Douglas, presented by Alan Reed and Associates. I hope.
Good evening, I'm Alan Reed. I'm here representing Heather Douglas and her husband, Daniel. We were here about two years ago and got their property rezoned from A1 into SF, I believe, two. And they were happy about that. The results were all well, but they really had problems with access to this lot. So now they were able to secure a small strip of land from the Arkansas Game and Fish, which allows them a better source of access to their property. But it's, the strip they got is still zoned A1. So they want to bring that into conformance with the other piece they already own and that was already approved. So we're just here tonight to see if we can move this forward and, and get that small zero point two-two acre piece of land to match what they already have.
Staff comments?
I'm impressed that they got this done, if you want to know the truth. That kind of stuff does not happen very often. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies recommended for approval. Ensure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size, stabilize property values and maintain the integrity of neighborhoods.
Any public comment? Commissioners? This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
By Mr. Tyler. That passes eight zero.
All right, thank you very much.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-eighth.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
Next is public hearing conditional use. We'll review C twenty-five dash zero-one, Marshall East New Fellowship Church. Asking a use unit forty-two and a C two. Is anyone here presenting on the church behalf? State your name, please.
Hello, my name is Alina Bergren and I'm the owner of the Blue Willow LLC, which I purchased in, uh, March, May, twenty twenty-one. Where I'm here to apply for the conditional use of the Marshall East Church that was operational while I purchased that property. At this point, I was not aware that the property, um, did not fill up the full application for the usage. And recently we found out that this is the case. So we are right here to submit all the paperwork and get your, your approval for the conditional use of the Marshall East Church.
Sure, thank you. Staff comments? One moment.
The ingress and egress is acceptable. There is a forty-foot access easement to the south allowing for proper ingress and egress. The off-street parking is acceptable if it's improved. The site contains sixteen of the required eighteen spots. There is a valid shared parking agreement at thirty-one thirty North Thompson to the south. Church parking needs to be striped, including one ADA spot with a loading area. Refuge and service areas, we need a written waste management plan, indicating plans for waste handling, litter collection, prevention, recycling and cleanup procedures. Do you have an arrangement with a commercial operation? Or do you have carts through the cities?
No, there's no streets on the, on the streets. They all have a proper parking in front of the church.
No, I'm talking about waste, waste
Who's picking up your trash?
Who's picking up the trash?
The trash?
Do they have a trash service that picks up the trash?
Yes, yes.
Do we, we need to see a copy of that written agreement for trash pickup?
Yes.
Okay, because we haven't seen that. The utilities, does the site have a septic system or is it hooked to sewer?
The what?
Does the, does the church have a septic system for wastewater? Or does, or is it hooked to the city sewer?
I was told that there is a septic system. But apparently my neighbor, which I just now talked, had to talk about this septic, he said that the system has, he made that arrangement to go through the city. So we
Okay, we're going to have to verify that this piece of prop, this, this structure is hooked to the sewer system or has an acceptable, um, septic system because we can't find it on the city records. We don't know what's going on with, with wastewater collection.
We do have a septic system.
Okay, do you have an existing permit for it? You have to get a permit through the Benton County Health Department to be able to opt, to have a septic system that shows where the lateral lines. Do you have that?
I was under the impression that we have a septic system because we have the area designated for septic, septic system and no one is allowed to drive there and then, but what I heard recently that that septic system is now operational going through the city.
Okay, I don't know that. Something has to be done to verify what kind of wastewater treatment facility is on that site before you can continue to operate. Because either it's, it's causing a problem with the neighbors or the septic system's not working or something, that's going to have to be cleared up.
Well, it was a septic system that I cleaned out myself. So maybe I'm bringing the wrong information that I just heard. But I'm known from my point that there is a septic system. I, I cleaned that septic system twice already.
When?
When?
Uh huh. When's the last time you had it cleaned?
This year, last year, twenty-four, and the previous year. It was twice, called the service and I cleaned that system. But the neighbor brought it in to me right now and he said that the, it's supposed to go to the city. This is information is not from
Okay, we're going to have to verify what kind of wastewater
Verified sources is we do, yes, we do have a septic system.
Okay, I need to see the permit for it and the time it's been cleaned.
Okay.
And that it is hooked up properly because we can't verify that. We have a complaint from the adjacent property owners that church members are going over to the business to use a restroom, which make you believe that the, the wastewater system's not working. Okay, is there a sign for the, for the church? It's not shown on the site plan. We don't know if there's, is one or not. The size and shape, it appears the building was not designed for assembly use, but applicant has been working with the fire marshal to ensure fire code compliance. It is generally accepted, acceptable. The location and the land uses is appropriate. Building was not designed for this type of use. We have complaints about trash and the way it's been operated. And I understand there's a church been going on there five or six, five or six years and we don't have a business license for it.
Oh.
Okay.
We do have representative from the church right here.
Have they been in operation? Have they been in operation for five or six years at that location?
Yeah, it's established, they have a business, what I understood right now, right?
Okay, what, what days of week do they have services and what times?
They have two services, they have Saturday and Sunday services. So Saturday is only from two hours, from 10 till, 11 till new, till two, to two. And Sunday, they have two services, one in the morning, two hours, and another in the evening, two hours.
And there's nobody there during the week?
No.
Okay. Yeah, 11 to 2 is three hours, not two.
No, they have two hours in the, on Saturday, and then two hours in-
They have two services.
In the morning and in the evening.
Okay, we will need them to submit to us in writing what their hours of operation are. So we would know what they are.
They submitted, they submitted that hours.
Okay, we do have that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. The bigger issue is the parking issue and, and driving back and forth, and the wastewater and the sanitation issues.
Any public comment? Any commissioners, any questions?
Now, we do have a letter that was submitted, it's in your packet, which we need to authorize. Either I need to read it, or y'all can authorize it being put into the record without it being read. It's your choice, whichever way you want to go.
Do you ever have a chance to read that letter? Is everybody okay putting it in the record without having it being read? We're good with that.
I do have one concern from reading the letter.
Please.
Reading, again, talking about the sewage issues, and if they've got a kitchen, that there may have been a grease, you know, confirming grease interceptor in place. Because if grease was actually clogging up, if there is, once we figure out the sewer situation, if they're actually using it as a, you know, is it a commercial kitchen or a break room? You know, what is its purpose, so?
Please.
Yeah, obviously, there's not a grease interceptor, and that was something that I was gonna bring up, what you guys got done is that we would want to be one of the conditional uses, that a grease interceptor be installed in order to, because that's why, you're either, you're either clogging up the septic system with grease, or they're clogging up the sewer with grease and it's backing everything up.
My recommendation would be that we table this and we work with this client to get all this stuff cleared up, so we know what we've got before you consider the conditional use. The septic system or the sewer system, what kind of use the kitchen's having, that kind of stuff, so we know everything that's going on.
So if we table it, that means you can come back in a month and resubmit for the conditional use. If we vote and deny it, and that means, how long before you come back, if ever? A year?
If the planning, if the council doesn't overturn the denial, it's a year before you can come back.
I didn't know anything about the septic system, to provide documentation, I would have looked and-
Sure. But I, I think based on you not having all the information that you need to have to present to us, and us not being able to understand what's actually going on with the property, I think the best thing is to table it, and then you, you, we can hear from you after you've met with the staff and the city and administration to figure out what's going on with the property. It'd be a lot easier for us to vote more accurately about your requests, that's my opinion, but you can do what you need to do. Would you like to table it, or you want us to vote?
Before you say something, I'd say the same thing, I'm, I'm open to it, but have a lot of questions to be answered based on what was just presented, so.
Yeah, right now, we don't have a parking lot that's striped, we don't know anything about the sewer or the septic system. We know there's a kitchen that may be being used in a way that's doesn't, is not helping your situation. We have a, 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 a neighbor that's complaining-
As far as I know, I do have people who are from church, they can confirm what, how they're using kitchen and stuff.
But the problem is the city doesn't have any of that information. It doesn't matter if you have it, if the city doesn't have it, we don't have any way of understanding what's, you know, we don't have any of the permits, we don't have any of the records. So there's a lot of things that we don't know, and it's hard for us to, to give you a conditional use if we don't know what's actually happening on the, the site. But we can vote, if you want us to vote, we can vote for it, if that's what you want us to do.
Well, if this is only the septic system, what is right now?
Those are the issues that are outstanding as to whether or not the planning commission will grant the conditional use. What we're asking is for, if you want to table it for a month, to give a chance for staff and you and the church to work these things out. So when we come back to the planning commission, we have the answers. Is there a septic system? Is the sewer disconnected? Has the parking lot been striped? All of those kind of things. If you want them to go ahead and vote on it, they can tonight. If it is denied, you have the right to appeal it to city council. If city council does not overturn it, you can't apply for the same conditional use for a year.
So we've postponed the voting, we have to resubmit more information for you guys and present it for the next hearing.
Right, you will have to work with staff to get the information we need to answer those questions that we've been talking about before the February meeting, yes.
February when? Because I wouldn't be out of country.
It's the first Tuesday of February, whatever day that is.
February 4th.
February 4th? Can't table it for more than a month. If you want to withdraw the request tonight and resubmit it with all this other stuff, you can do that, but they're not authorized to have church there in interim.
But I can also send the representative, right, in case I wouldn't be able to-
You can, yes.
I'll just do that, we'll just, we'll just postpone that decision until we present all the information, and then we can-
Okay, thank you, so this is tabled, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Going back to the rezoning for Derek Calhoun, the authorization of representation we have is to Mark Marquest, not to Riverwood Homes, it's just, unless you have another one. We have the authorization for- David?
Yeah, David Phillips at the attorney's office. You represented that the company does not own the property, therefore, you are correct, it is very specific and cannot be further expanded.
Right. Okay, which means we need to table this to the next meeting, and you need to get authorization form for, if it's the company, fine. If it's you, fine, it just needs to be very clear, this is very specific to Mark Marquest, that's what I have to go with.
Okay, we can handle that.
Thank you. Next up is C 25-03, 265 Food Court. This is a use unit 52 for a food truck court and a C5. We also have a large scale to review as well, we also have a variance and a waiver. Presented by Anthony, Anthony with Sand Creek Engineering.
Good evening, my name is Anthony Ferreira with Sand Creek Engineering. I'm here to answer any questions y'all might have.
Staff comments?
On the conditional use, the ingress and egress to the property is acceptable, it has two access points on the site separated by 275 feet. The off-street parking and loading area is acceptable. Refuge and service areas, there is no identification on the site plan how trash is gonna be taken care of. You need to identify that and show us what arrangements you have for trash pickup.
Okay.
Utilities, the applicant has utilized a third party for the discharging gray water. Staff is waiting for a copy of that set agreement, we've got to have that as well. Screening, there's no screening required. Your site plan doesn't show whether you're putting a sign on the property or not?
So we show a location where they're planning on putting one, but not necessarily the specific sign itself, because they're not quite there yet.
Okay, we will need to know the specifics of the sign before you can get a permit for that. The yard requirements and open space is acceptable, the size and shape of the site is acceptable, the proposed landscaping, we just talked about that, is acceptable with the following conditions. Cannot operate between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, no obstruction of parking spaces required for the operation, any other use on the site, maintain the site, oh, that- Obstruction of pedestrian or motor vehicle traffic flow, no obstruction of traffic signals, no vending upon a public way, sound, any devices that produces, you can't have any sounded devices that produces a loud and raucous noise in violation of the city ordinance. Have to keep the area site clean and free of paper or refuge. You have to have that submission of the gray water disposal method, you have to have an approved grease disposal method, and electric service must be underground permanent services. You also have a variance, you want to do 10 mobile vending units and leave the existing ice dispensing, so technically, there would be three, 11 mobile vending units on that site, that would be a variance to allow that one extra with this, with the ice machine there. It doesn't have anybody that comes to it except to service it.
Right.
Right, is a coin operated, you come in, put your coins in, it's not like coming to a food truck itself?
Correct.
Okay.
And we submitted the variance for that as well.
Yeah, right.
Any further staff comments? Okay, we'll do conditional use first.
Conditional use doesn't pass, there's no point doing the large scale.
This will be a call for the vote for a conditional use, unit 52. Obviously, we're just approving the conditional use, not the large scale, not the variances or the waiver yet, that'll be handled next, this will be a call for the vote.
Hey, Mark, you didn't ask for questions. And I do have one quick question.
Well, first, yeah, we need public comment, is there any public comment? Please come up, state your name and address, and tell us what's on your mind.
My name is Billy Birchfield, I'm the owner of the property to the south, where Commons Inging is right now. And my only concern I have is the stormwater drain system. Currently, there is an existing ditch right on the property line at the south side, that serves for their property, most of the southern part, and then also the northern part, but our property flows into there. And also, when it's really heavy down the storms, is even water coming in from Old Missouri Road. Because it doesn't really have a drainage system there at all, I mean, the closest inlet is south, where the car wash is, or all the way north where the intersection is to, to Huntsville Road.
Sure, so any, any stormwater management will be handled during the, the, using the commercial design standards and large scale developments, we'll make sure that all that's handled correctly, I'll let Patsy's be bored of that.
Right now, the ditch is already there, and on the plan, ditch begins about 100 foot in, or 120 foot in from the right away, it should go all along our property and their property, because there's gonna be a lot more water coming down now.
Okay, we will address the drainage issue. We will address the drainage issue in just a minute with the large scale, so you can look at it.
We, we kept it up for the last 20 years, on this property for 20 years, and we kept that drainage up as good as we could, and it was always an issue. Like I said, even water from Old Missouri flows in.
Yeah, I understand.
Especially since they repaved from the state, it's, the elevation is even higher now, and we have even bigger issue there. I mean, it can be solved, it's not-
Sure.
But I think that drainage needs to be bigger.
Okay, what we're talking, what we're telling you is in just a few minutes-
Okay.
We're gonna look at the plan that shows how they're gonna address the drainage, because we know it has to be addressed too.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Commissioners?
I just, just a quick question with that ice machine. Is there any issue, like for some reason, that ice machine goes away, and then they have the use of 11, is that, is there any issue with that?
The variance is to allow 11 only because that exists. If it goes away, we don't go to 11. Okay.
Call for the vote? Mr. Austin? The conditional use passes eight to zero, now we'll move forward to the large scale. Staff comments?
The developer is required to improve the abutting street to City of Springdale standards, and so that would include a 10-foot sidewalk along Huntsville and 265, and they requested a waiver for that, they'd like to just keep the five-foot sidewalk that's already there, and there is a five-foot sidewalk there. There's a drive right across the street on Huntsville, if y'all would just show that on your plans, I just want to see how it lines up, because I know it's slightly offset. And then, in the pond, I'd like y'all to look at the velocities, and I'm worried there'll be some issues with scour coming into the pond, just everything running off of that parking lot. Maybe look at like a filter strip, some erosion control mats, things like that. And just for the drainage, I did meet with the tenants at the Commons, actually, before this came in, and we talked about drainage, and then when, when these guys came in, we were like, oh, great, we're having drainage issues. So I, I actually think that what they've come up with is going to significantly approve the drainage, and then the guys at Commons said that they've also looked into doing something on their side to complement it. So I, I don't think it's going to be, it's not going to exacerbate the issues that you guys are having, I'm, I think it'll actually make it better.
For planning, Patsy covered most of the comments that we have, but in addition to standard comments of the written waste management plan for trash, wastewater, and grease. The front setback on Old Missouri is 30, so part of that variance request, B 2501, is for the encroachment of that existing ice machine, as well as to allow the 11. And they do, they have a perimeter landscaping variance, which is for the east side of that parking, that goes up to, to Huntsville. And then the waiver for the sidewalks on Huntsville and Old Missouri to, to match the five-foot one. That's all we have.
The perimeter landscaping on the south side is, they're not putting it there because of the ditch?
Correct, it's that, this outlines it right here.
It's between a fence and the trucks, and we don't think it'll do well.
So are you putting that in another location on the site, or trying to waive it completely?
Trying to waive it completely. Would you be open to putting it somewhere else on the site? Because you have very little green space currently.
Right, well, I can discuss that with the owner and see what they're willing to.
You want to do that now?
They're talking right now.
The, the parking area that you have doesn't have any trees in any of that parking, are there any islands?
So there are islands, and we do have trees shown in that, I believe.
In the playground area, it's just all open grass, there's no shade in there or anything?
No, there'll be slides and all that kind of stuff in there, so it'll just be, yep, there we go.
Just to confirm, I think I understand this, but the, the drive-through there, that's for emergency and temporary use only, that's primarily pedestrian one that's in operation, correct?
Correct, yeah, and it'll be a one-way, and we're, we're planning to block off the entrance to that to just-
With a gate or something?
Yep.
Both sides, I'm assuming?
Both sides.
They come to conclusion back there? Looks like he's coming up here to talk to us.
You will have an equal amount of landscaping somewhere on the site to take care of that landscaping you're taking off, right? Got it.
Thank you for that. So we'll remove that variance request. Any public comment? Commissioners?
So I was not able, I was looking at the lighting plan and the photometric, and it was too fuzzy for me to read, I can't tell anything about it. Looking at the light fixture that's proposed, it's more of a street-type light fixture, and does not appear to be like a full cutoff 90-degree fixture. It just seems a little, it's a kind of an overkill for this type of a situation, I think we'd want to take it down a notch and try to put something that's a little, a little, you know, a little more subtle, that would be specifically for a parking lot type of situation, and that we'll have that full cutoff.
Okay.
You agreeable to make that change?
The person that does the lighting is another sub-entity, so I'll have to discuss that with them.
Okay, you'll get back with us and let us know that that can be changed?
Yes.
Yeah, we just want a full cutoff, commercial, standard light fixture, made for parking lot lighting, not roadway interstate type stuff, which is currently what's in the packet.
I thought what I had looked at was it, it matched the, what is it, Broadway Food Court? It was a similar setup to what they had, but maybe not.
Yeah, I don't think it is, but as long as we're on the same page, it shouldn't be that big of a deal, just making sure we have the right thing there. So let's look at, so the variance request layout will be to increase the maximum number of food trucks from 10 to 11, due to the fact that, that ice machine is existing, this will be a call for the vote. Call for the vote? By Mr. Couch. That passes eight to zero. The next thing we'll look at is a waiver request for street improvements, this will be a motion to forward to city council with our recommendation to approve or deny this request. Do we want to look at, is the sidewalk separate from the street improvement?
They're just asking for the waiver of sidewalk.
The only street improvement they have is that.
Okay.
Everything else is to standard, yes.
Any commissioner, are we having comments?
And they're just looking to do the, not waive the sidewalk altogether, just the width.
Right, they want to keep the five and still doing the 10. One would argue 10 is more pedestrian-friendly and more inviting to get people to engage and walk and hang out, and the things that you think you'd want at a food court.
They want to leave the existing five-foot sidewalk there and do nothing else to it, right?
I think there's a small portion that they would need to add, and they were proposing five-foot. It, it's not much, I don't know how long it is, you know?
Yeah, so it's just the frontage along, it's Old Missouri, and everything- Yeah, so it's just the frontage along Old Missouri, and everything coming up to it is five foot. So if we would put 10 foot, it would not match any of that. And that's what we're trying to just keep the same with that.
My argument would be that you're creating a completely different use for that area versus what else is along that stretch. So I think a 10-foot sidewalk is the right thing to do here. That's my opinion. This will be a call for the vote.
Okay, this is a waiver request, so we recommend.
That's right. This is a waiver request, either recommend to approve or deny the request to keep the sidewalk at five foot.
I'm going to move to deny.
So we have a motion, and a second? Motion to deny?
Second.
Second by Mr. Clement. That waiver request is denied, seven of the one.
So we'll be required to do the 10 foot?
Well, the recommendation will go to council that it would be denied. If you don't want it to go with that denial, and you want to change it, then we can keep it from going to council. But if you want to argue again for it, you have a chance at council meeting.
You do also have the option of paying in lieu of the improvements, just making the payment to us and not doing them. So we can talk about that as well.
And we also need to have a motion subject to staff comments and large scale. So I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Clement.
Second.
Second by Ms. Keith. That passes eight to zero. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next up is our L25-02, Chem Station Expansion, presented by Engineering Services Incorporated. We have a variance request and a waiver request.
Nick Boning with Engineering Services. Can I answer any questions on the chem station large scale?
Staff comments?
For planning, besides standard comments, need a legend identifying all symbols used. Legend needs to be updated on all sheets. Provide filed RP24-04. As our records, North County reflects this replat and the proposed 25-foot access easement per RP2404 called out on the site plan. Revised civil with, set with recording information is needed. Along with that, it says, "As previously discussed in the pre-application meeting, construction may not begin until RP2404 and proposed access easement within it is filed with the county and a copy is provided to city staff. Please accurately label the project number of the replat on all sheets. Need to pin all corners, please label and add the description of these pins. Show total number of parking spaces provided. Parking calculations need to be updated. I think there were some questions about ADA spots, how many there were, are, and will be. Is there a parking agreement? If not, is one proposed? Will ADA spaces be included in the agreement? I guess there was a conversation between you and Sarah that confirmed that there will be a parking agreement at some time. Minimum of three feet of clear width excluding vehicle overhang must be provided as an accessible circulation route. Therefore, the sidewalk must be either five feet wide or have wheel blocks between handicap access point and doorway. Wheel blocks will be present on the north, or shall be present on the northern parking spaces, which adjoining the sidewalk within the expansion. You still have two parking places that don't have the wheel stops shown on the civil set. Screening fences required in accordance with Chapter 56. Show trees associated with screen. Is the screening fence detailed on Sheet 7? The proposed screening fence for the adjacent residential property, or does the detail only reflect the proposed dumpster screening? The fence identified on the site plan should be shown within the legend. Proposed incompatible use fence should be accurately reflected on the site plan with the detail provided to show ordinance compliance, and that'd be the 50-foot sections. To be approved prior to issuing granting permit, should be noted fences are not to be constructed within the drainage easements. Perimeter landscaping is required in accordance with Chapter 56. Variance B2505 has been requested for not providing perimeter landscape on the east, north, or west side of the proposed development. What is the island on the east side of the proposed dumpster enclosure being utilized for? What is the surfacing material being proposed? If it's not anticipated to be ran over by tractor-trailers, is this an area that can be landscaped in partial lieu of perimeter landscaping? Lighting plan is encouraged, displaying a one-foot, at least one-foot candle on all parking and pedestrian areas. Lighting plan does not reflect accurate parking lot layout nor landscaping plan. Update accordingly. Revised lighting plan to show full cutoff shelves on the wall packs, which are adjacent to residential. Also added, Sheet 10 is labeled as a lighting plan, though no lighting details are shown. This needs to be upgraded, or updated, pardon me. Five-foot sidewalk is required along ESI Drive as a local street per master street plan. Waiver 24-03 has been submitted for that.
Engineering comments. Increases and post-development peak discharge from new development areas shall be mitigated with onsite or offsite storage. So they're not proposing any detention on this site. And that's a real big concern to me in this area specifically. The Mobile Home Park to the north has had multiple flood insurance claims. There's an existing flooding issue in this area. The road floods, as anyone who drives by there frequently will see. The property to the east has drainage issues. I've met with them in the past. They have standing water issues that could only be exacerbated if this site was filled. When I asked how they were going to mitigate, they said they were going to use storage in their pipe system, but I haven't seen any calculations to show how that will be done. Sidewalks are required along ESI Drive, and they've requested a waiver. Utility crossings shall be bored, only any open cuts have to be approved by the Public Works Director, so we'll need their approval before you can open cut that street. The driveway detail calls for asphalt, but the paving plan shows concrete. I think there's just some, a mistake in there, so we just need that note clarified. And then, please update the floodplain note to the new firm date and panel number.
So Katie, is there enough issues with the drainage on this that we're ready to move forward? I mean, is this something that can be handled at the staff level, or does this needs to be addressed before us planning commission to take action?
I mean, as shown, they are not mitigating any of their stormwater as required by the drainage manual. I don't feel comfortable with this moving forward with what we have so far.
So do you want to table it and address those issues?
I think that would probably be the best bet. I did go back and redo the calculation for pipe storage, so we are able to mitigate it in, I think, all the years, but the one year goes up by 1% with just our pipe storage. But we can discuss this with, move with the staff and table if we need to.
But you haven't submitted anything for him, for them to look at and see that it's been verified?
Not as of today, no, I have not.
Okay.
I got it ready for today, and then just didn't have time to submit it.
Well, if you'd have submitted today, we wouldn't have had time to review it either. We don't take submissions the day of the meeting, so. Okay, so you're asking for this to be tabled?
Yes.
Okay.
Since large-scale development request has been tabled. Moving on to Form Based Code, FB25-01, Daxton and Paige Harrison. This is a deviation for increased fence height from six foot to eight foot, presented by Paige Harrison.
As well as Daxton Harrison.
Good evening, my name is Dax Harrison, and this is my wife Paige Harrison. And whenever they came and explained to me that the fence was too tall, I said I would cut it, so, but I do like the fence. So if everybody's okay with it, I'd like to keep it at eight foot.
So requesting eight-foot height rather than six, as well as for the primary supports to be facing the neighboring properties versus interior to our property. But we do, I will note that we don't have any, it's all vertical supports. Because of the way the fence is built, there aren't any horizontal supports on the neighboring property side.
Staff comments?
Does that eight-foot fence go all the way out to the street?
No, it stops at the front face of the house.
I think the drawing that we had before is a little bit misleading. It stops at, okay, it stops at the front edge of the house?
Yes, and then the porch is in front of the fence.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. So from that front end of the house, all the way to the back, it's eight foot all the way around?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Now they have a fence, so they're pull.
Yeah, yeah, that's like shifted there.
The drawing got flipped with the line, and it got flipped with it, okay.
Any public comment? Question for you. Why did you put the post to your neighbor and not your side?
I didn't do enough research. I didn't know I was doing anything wrong.
It was an oversight on our part when we started building.
It was an accident.
Go ahead.
So you paid for that fence? You built it, you paid for it?
Yeah.
It looks really small now in comparison to how tall the house ended up, so it looks like it's six foot now.
It's a nice-looking fence, I'm not going to lie to you.
It's premium deck boards.
Yeah, that is a nice-looking fence.
Stain them to look like cedar, and it's going to.
What does your neighbor think of having the post on their side?
She, well, at first, I thought it was on, well, she thought it was on her property a little bit, so I found the pin, and it was four inches on hers, so we moved it over. She didn't say anything about the, about the supports being, she liked the fence, as far as I know.
Sure.
So she's happy?
I believe, well, I think, I don't know.
Someone did. We're not sure who.
Guess you're not asking for that, you're just asking for the height. This will be a call for the vote. Unless you have further questions. Yeah, I guess it does say that, doesn't it? Yeah.
Note to self, if you build the next fence, put the other way around, okay?
Unless you get approval, I mean, some people care, some people don't, but yeah. Call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
By Mr. Couch. That passes eight, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is FB25-02, Stairsteppers LLC, presented by Stairsteppers LLC. This is a request from NC1 to NC2.
Tom Lundstrom, 1327 Elm Springs Road. I represent the property owner. I am a property owner.
Staff comments? Do you have any, is that it?
If you have any questions, what we're willing to do.
Staff comments?
The NC1 is identified as a primary retail district of downtown. And I think the further away you get from Emma Street, the harder it is to have retail on the bottom floor. And what, switching it to an NC1 would allow them to have the option, I mean, NC2, would have the option to put residential on the bottom floor. And I think, I think that works well for this neighborhood. I think we need to go back and look at the Form Based Code and identify areas that are off Emma Street directly to give us this option and put it back that way. So staff would recommend this be approved.
Any public comment? Please step forward. State your name.
Mike Gilbert, 211 West Maple Avenue. This is a good move. As Patsy identified, there are a number of properties that are designated as an NC1 that remain in the condition they were in when the Form Based Code was passed for that reason. And I believe that once you get off of Emma Avenue specifically, if you look to NC2 specifically in the area between, say, Shiloh and 71 Business, you'll see a lot of activity.
Thank you. Any comments about commissioners? This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Ms. Keith? That passes eight to zero. Thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 28th.
Next up is B25-04, Homewood Suites Motel. This is a variance for a reduction of required parking spaces, presented by Hope Consulting.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Dylan Billy with Hope Consulting. Here answering questions you may have.
Staff comments?
Okay, basically, they went back and added the parking islands in, and lost a few parking spaces. They were able to negotiate the access through SAMs.
Yes, ma'am.
And that small number of parking spaces are asking for a variance for, I think, is.
Six.
Yeah, it's not much compared to what, everything they've accomplished with this site.
Does that mean?
How many rooms do you have?
It is at 99 rooms.
99?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment? Any comments from commissioners? This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
By Mr. Cardio. That passes eight to zero. Thank you. Glad to have you in that area, by the way.
Thank you so much.
Next up is waivers. Item up for review is W25-01, presented by Maria Martinez. Asking for a waiver of street improvement sidewalk on Theodore Drive.
Do we have the picture?
We do have a quick question. So Maria's not here today, her husband is. Can he present on her behalf?
Stand by.
Okay. Yeah, and I can help translate if needed. That's okay. Yes, Myra Rebus. And so essentially, we have the waiver to the street improvements. We have those pictures here, and we do have a bond out, is my understanding.
Okay, we built a new structure at this location.
Correct.
And one of the requirements for a single-family home is to build the sidewalk. And they are asking to waive and not build the sidewalk, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, and the reason being?
The way that, I believe, there's, so that pole, the light pole is right there. I believe there are other, there's the ditch right there where that would be.
And the water meter.
And then the water meters in the way as well.
Okay, the pole and the meter can be worked around. Has staff been out to look at it to see if it's possible to put a sidewalk there?
It's possible. One thing that you guys may consider, especially since you have already submitted the bond, is you could pay for that sidewalk, we would keep the bond, and then you would be waived to that requirement when the city decides to go in and make improvements on Theodore Street. We would build them then, and your portion would be paid for.
I guess, question there, so because there was a recent development there, we're the ones that, or I guess he's the one that has to pay for the building of the street, of the sidewalk. And everyone else on that street is going to get that sidewalk. It's not just that piece, right?
Well, no, everybody who, if one of these houses is rebuilt, they would be required to do that sidewalk as well. There are no plans currently to put sidewalks on Theodore. But in the case that we did this one day, yes.
So basically, we'd like to include more sidewalks in Springdale to have a more walkable community. So we have to, every one of these comes in, and we have to say, all right, does this make sense? And so there's really two options, or there's more. But what she's, Katie's speaking of, is you can do payment in lieu, which they'll figure out how much it costs to put the sidewalk in. You'll pay for it, but you don't have to put it in today.
Okay.
If we come back as a city and, or more redevelopment happens, that money is used to put the sidewalk in.
Right.
The city will do it, you won't have to do it.
Right, but we already paid the bond, right? So.
I'm not sure about the bond.
Yeah.
And they bonded for it so they could get into the house to get a C of all.
Yeah.
Correct, so in that case, you wouldn't have to make an additional payment. You just want to get your bond back. But that's, that's an option that you guys could choose, it's not required.
Yeah, so the money you put in for the bond would stay with the city, and they would build that sidewalk if that neighborhood develop out.
Yep, and so if that was to, so if this request is to be denied and goes through, you do the sidewalk, when would that happen? Like, would we get timeframe on that? Is that?
Well, we can't tell you what timeframe it would be done. The city would have to take on that project sometime in the future. And it's not on the plans right now, I can tell you that.
So I mean, I mean, we could vote tonight. We could either agree to what your waiver request and accept and recommend that. and accept and recommend that, the City Council has to do the final thought on this. So we could recommend that they approve your waiver, or we can recommend that they deny your waiver.
Right.
Or we can say, since they already posted a bond, we can do a payment in lieu. And then that money would just stay with the cities. Whenever that street got improved, they would pay, they would do the sidewalk in front of this, the new house that was just built.
I will say, I believe the bond is typically for 150% of the cost, so you would receive a bit of your money back. You don't have to pay 150% for the sidewalk.
Okay, so...
So you can, we can vote for it as you presented, or we could change it and say we recommend payment in lieu. So that's kind of the two options. Either we can deny it, accept, or change it up a little bit and do a payment in lieu of.
And if you guys want to build the sidewalk, we can meet out there and we can look at how we can try and make it work.
Right, we don't have timeframe, we just know if we decide to go this route, it will get done eventually.
You never have to worry about it again. It will be paid for. If you sell the lot, it's already been paid for. The next person wouldn't have to put up any money to do it either.
So if we present it as is and it gets denied and we already paid the bond, we're still, you still keep the money? No, it gets released.
If it gets denied, then the sidewalk has to be built.
I'm sorry, if it gets approved?
If it gets approved, then the bond is returned to the, to you guys, yes.
Okay.
I recommended the payment in lieu of, or then build the sidewalk.
Yeah, okay.
And that's the thing with the, with the payment in lieu, is if you guys were to put the sidewalk in yourself, like you said, there's obstacles, there's the drainage ditch. It might not look the best, but if we can undertake that in the future as a whole project, we can do all those improvements. Curb and gutter, move the poles, you know what I mean? It just, you get a better product overall when we can do it kind of all as one, if that makes sense. And you guys still have, of course, your, your chance to lead your case to the City Council. They will just make a recommendation.
So I think we'll proceed in this, this way.
You want us to vote?
No, I think we're gonna...
Due to payment in lieu?
Yep.
Okay. So what's being requested? And we can have a motion. There you go. Let's do that. Withdrawn.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate all the...
Yeah, of course. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Cardell. Brilliant speaker of another beautiful language. That will wrap up tonight's agenda. Before we go to the Planning Director's Report, I wanted to say something. This is Mr. Dale Tyler's last Planning Commission, right? Eight years?
Yes, eight years.
Personally, I've had three years with Mr. Tyler. It's been great. He's been just a great guy to work with and I appreciate a lot of direction he gave me, especially early on when I had no idea what I was doing. And it's been great working with him. Thank you, Dale. I appreciate you.
I was going to say the same thing, so I'll just reiterate what you said. Ray is going to be reappointed and we will have a new Planning Commission member that will be appointed at council meeting next week to take Dale's place. So we'll have a full council that way. Work session would be the 20th at 5:00 PM and we need to meet in the community room. We have a gentleman who's looking at a tiny homes project that he wants to come and talk to you guys about that project before it gets submitted. And we talk through that with the challenges and concerns that happen with that piece of project, with that, with that project. So that's at 5:00 PM on the 20th in the community room. At the next meeting, we'll need to do election of officers. And with Dale stepping down, we will need to elect a secretary, so y'all need to be thinking about who would be the secretary. Mark could move out of the chairman position, but you don't have to do that. You could keep him there if y'all decide to do that. The City Council upheld the Planning Commission's denial of the C5 rezoning at Wagon Wheel. They will hear the appeal of the rezoning for Mobile Home Park at the meeting on the 14th. And the request to, to rezone property from C2 or SF2 to SF3 at, on Ivy Lane was denied by the City Council. We're seeing a new preliminary plat that's coming in at the, at the next meeting with the larger lot sizes. So, and I think that's all I have on my report.
Thank you. Good night.